Meeting here and everybody are participating. Take care of them as we talk about the resolution that's going to be upcoming. That it may provide us in goodness in our wills and for the community and Navajo Nation. Thank you and bless everybody that attend. Thank you and pray to you say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, moving on down to the review and adopt of the agenda. So being that I don't know if Tuminti is here.
Motion. Ray eyes.
Okay, motion by Willie.
I second the motion Chair Roland.
Hey Roland. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second and then I guess we'll just go quickly. We do have the North Regional Council meeting. We have for today six P M virtual special meeting. We recall order, we have roll call. The we have total of ten individuals here. Priscilla provided the invocation. And then motion and second first by Willie and second by Roland. To adopt the agenda, we have one resolution today, which is NOS two thousand twenty five dash two six five days zero zero one, which is supporting the nomination council legislation number zero two one nine dash two five to restore funding to for the legislative and judicial branches and the nomination fiscal over here. Two thousand twenty six comprehensive budget and requesting to waive the two resolution requirement, which is going to be sponsored by council delegate. And then after that, we have number six is adjournment. Agenda was created by me. So with that, motion, we have a second. I'll call for the question.
Motion here go.
Okay. Motion, thank you. Okay, I guess we'll go to the vote. All those in favor? Guess we'll go by whoever is here Willie.
In favor.
Thank you, Alex.
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, Marsha.
In favor.
Thank you, Robert.
In favor.
Thank you.
In favor, in favor.
Thank you. Roland.
Wood and Green Chair.
Thank you very much Willis. Willis. Okay, Twyla.
In favor.
In favor and Herman. In favor.
In favor.
Okay, thank you very much. Priscilla.
In favor.
Okay, with that, and I'll abstain. With that, we have a total of two, four, six, eight, ten. With one abstention, motion passes. Okay, moving on. We have one resolution on the table. I'm not too sure if honorable um honorable Daniels would like to go ahead and provide a quick overview, but first we'll go ahead and motion, have a motion. Entertaining motion.
I'll do that. Priscilla, I'll motion it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Alright, with motion and a second.
G R A Y.
G R. G R A Y. About that, alright. Um, honorable Daniels, are you able to provide a quick overview on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you very much. Um, thank you. Um, my fun, all Zito, Shanto, Tapiken leadership, thank you for joining the the call. And also motioning parties. To adopt that the resolution, such important resolution. Resolution. I don't have um that that legislation. At the number. Uh. I don't have that on hand right now. Um. L D A Robert, Robert, can you um go over to maybe just a a quick um update? And overview on the the let the the legislation that is moving forward by the delegate parish.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Uh, big ah which now. Um Chair, I can proceed.
Go ahead.
Uh, Chair and not on that um a vice chair and then our secretary, I don't the members of um all Jato Navajo Mountain, all Jato Shanto, it's African chapters they care for being on the call. Um, as much as I could, I um sent out legislation zero two one nine dash two five. Um, I think the only one that I couldn't get to was Twilight. But basically, um, the language, um, the main heading gave um an action related to the Budget and Finance Committee, the not committee and the nomination council amending C S dash forty four dash two five. The nomination fiscal year twenty twenty six comfort twenty twenty six comprehensive budget. So um, the area that um that it's asking for is um amending C S forty four dash two five, the nomination fiscal year to twenty twenty six budget. A D A nine oh eight uh under their a nomination hereby approves appropriations for the nomination fiscal year twenty twenty six. As listed for the legislative bench with the following items totaling eight million, one hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty three dollars from the general funds. Upon approval, each program will submit complete bucket but budget package. Package including authorized signatures to the controller. Uh, officers of controller and officers of the management budget based on appropriation as indicated in exhibit D and as follows. I don't there elicits the areas that um that this um budget is going to be. Um, um, I guess addressing. Okay, number one, gain nomination council um in the amount of two million, forty one thousand three dollars. I don't know. Number two, a budget and finance committee in amount of sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy four. Office of the speaker in amount of four hundred and seventy eight thousand, three hundred and thirty seven. Office of Legislative Council in amount of one million, sixty five thousand, three hundred and nineteen. And an office of legislative services in amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Health and Education Human Services Committee in amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty four. Resources Development Committee in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty six. Law and Order Committee in the amount of seventy thousand, three hundred and one. Number two, number committee in the matter of five hundred and thirty three dollar, five hundred and thirty three thousand, five hundred and ninety three. Out on that well, let's legislative district program in the amount of point two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, forty six. Add on the the Navajo Youth Advisory Council. Two hundred and forty five thousand, forty three dollars. On a legislative personnel adjustment pool, a a one million, twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy. So that's the area that um they got the line item videos. By President um um Nigra and as you can see, it pretty much um is um talk uh i i uh the areas there were are are pretty much in the legislative branch. Except for the uh, I think they use the advisory council, but they put it under like the the legislative branch it answer. So most of this is a legislative branch. Add on that um um down the other areas that they um uh that they're addressing is some of the um um the main areas, the judicial branch. There you go, um up to fifteen areas. Um, of the court administration of a court and the additional judicial dish. And lead judicial district, Crown Point Judicial District, Winder Rock Judicial District, Chabrow Judicial District, Tuvus City Judicial District, Rayma Judicial District. Supreme Court Peacemaking Program, Kanta Judicial District, Delcon Judicial District, Anna Judicial District. Alamo Judicial District, probate probation services and Judicial Conduct Commission. So all of that, a um ninety four thousand, uh, four hundred and seventy one dollars and seventy seven, seven hundred and thirty ninety, nine hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars from the general funds, a a exhibit E they did also. So uh basically, um, what the council wants to do is uh adjust the areas that were line item vetoed and then I guess um on the judicial side, eh, the areas that um they um uh I I don't know if I'm delegate Daniels can uh explain it a little bit better, but for more part it um giving um uh I don't know, this is supplemental. I I don't think this is part of the main budget. Yeah, so but if if it was included in the line item videos, negros, so this is areas that they're just gonna try to, no, they're trying to put the money back in there so that uh we have operations um starting um um the next fiscal year. So and that that's the legislation and it's up for um consideration on the twenty fourth. So today's the twenty second and um um okay, Nabis on Thursday. Dude, no Wednesday. Wednesday, but one of the more, I see Nabi meeting, yeah, yeah, so that meant Nabi meeting, she they'll be considering this uh resolution to be presented and I think um uh delegate Daniels is asking for support from the the chapters that must most of the chapters in our region or the capital thing have a little man they uh they evolve like to regular chapter meeting. So and I believe that gives um his estimate was to go region so that um uh China get the support from the uh leadership. So I I feel this chair and I I don't know if um um delegate Daniels has anything to add to it.
Okay, thank you very much. The Robert, I mean, um, that, Herman Daniels, delegate, honorable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Carly, um North Regional President, I don't just not Thomas, I'm gonna get um, yeah, Robert did a good job going over the 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 budget to get that was line item vetoed by the president. Um, could do the great um legislative branch at and he's like it is, but the only thing we have is our salary day, yeah, yeah, other than that, no travel to attend. So I don't know, and I hate um, yeah, legislative branch, what's that? Also on judicial branch. More than likely. Okay, continue resolution. Uh, council voted on the the comprehensive budget and legislation. At a line item veto. So it yeah, I just wanna, we just want your support. Could all the support that the the legislation that is moving forward. It yeah, also we're gonna do an amendment to add this resolution to the agenda. So you have the supporting resolution for it. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, honorable Daniels, Marshall, any question?
Yes. And although that has twenty two million, we only accounted for like a little over eight million. I was wondering which of the key or which um what did he line item veto from his? I guess from the executive branch, we're only seeing the legislative and judicial. Does anybody know?
Looking at the looks like he only line item.
Let me ask him because is there any key things that would be a support to the chapter and the um the local community that he also crossed out that we could probably add?
Looks like he line item vetoed uh the controllers. Budget here. If you're looking at my screen, I haven't showed up um one oh seven office controller. Additional allocation allocation in general funds, which is fourteen million. Fourteen point six million, looks like, and then I think there should be the only items that he the line item vetoed in his budget.
Did um, did you guys get your own money T B K?
Nope.
Did you expend all of your ARP funds?
Hmm, no.
We get at the office of the controller. We have no payouts. I don't know what their support was for.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did, we did get all of our ARPA funds. We just got our our third uh tranche, I guess you'd say, we did get all, so uh right now we are.
Well, O O C is important in payouts, um, but I don't know what services was on actually. I guess. Crossed out. I say that's an important service. What else is there?
Hmm.
Is it fourteen, fourteen million, right?
Fourteen point six million.
That's a wow.
But that's just for the additional allocations in the.
From general funds, but for what though?
Uh.
Because he line item item vetoed about fifteen million, right, from his department or from his over, the ones that he oversees. So there must be a smaller cut somewhere else.
This is Daniels again. I'm I'm trying to pull up the 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 information where he line item vetoed again, where I'm at, only have a I don't have got my signal where I'm at. Okay. I'm in the, I'm in the hospital.
Yeah. I think it's probably the department D P M. Fourteen. Looks at one P M, one million.
Department of Personnel Management?
Yeah. That's pretty much it. I don't see any other items.
So is the council looking to override this?
This is the whole new different legislation. They can't override line adding vetoes with the same legislation. So, um.
Is there anyone?
Yeah, this is totally different legislation who.
Well, they don't have line item. Well, they don't have that for line item veto, right? They can't, they can't override it. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. The amendment, yeah, amendment that I did it to the that the legislation that was approved by council is an amendment of legislation.
Well, Chanel, so the with with the amendment is, it's a it's still a the same legislation that they had the same numbers for the executive branch, the ones that weren't line item. So all you're doing is um putting the ones that are line item veto young give back on to the um to the resolution and then and attaching it again. So is it, is it kind of considered a different legislation or is it kind of like a continuation of the same one?
It's a a a a different legislation, but like I said, it's a like amending um amended the 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 comprehensive um legislation it it did I did.
Okay. So it's totally separate from the the main, the main um budget that was passed. I mean, the ones that.
So this so the resolution that we're supporting is um, what's the number on it?
You nineteen.
It hasn't gone through the five year or the five day comment period yet, right?
Negative.
Okay, so it doesn't have a number yet.
Zero two one nine.
Zero two one nine dash two five is basically just totally focused on the legislative and judicial branches then.
Oh.
Okay. There's nothing for the other stuff. Okay. Cause I was looking at their paperwork to see if there was anything else, but it looks like it's just the judicial and legislative bridge. Or no, yeah, that's right. Okay.
He he probably went after the controller, but the controller is pretty much in um.
Oding him.
He was working with V N F committee all this time to get.
Yeah. And I think D P M also because they had support from the personnel. Or some of the stuff that he was doing, like giving raises. Wow. Yeah. I mean, it would have been nice to add the two, but um it is what it is. Okay. Think uh we can call for the question.
Okay, call for the question. I'll see you go down the line again. Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
Wait, hold on now, I have a question. I have a question. I have a question. Okay.
We're voting. Go ahead Willis.
Well, don't don't do Zoom then. You know how Zoom is. So you have problems with Zoom, you have a hard time uh unmuting yourself.
Yeah, Willis, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, the the. My question is, uh, has it ah. The job and can need a door to show. You hit it. Ah, God, yeah, she only change, you can hold ya. Oh. They're who mother, they're like, check them, they're da, and they're they should know hello. No, 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 I hello. Eh, she had a name. Adam, oh, resolution by Hader, yeah, don't ask, but I don't know, I don't know, so. The other hand, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Belanda, it's like a, oh, yeah, she come out. Oh, the the way that uh the next uh, I'm kid, I kid, how are we gonna, how are we gonna address that? The the asset, I want to. Has it, ah, eh, 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 she, she, that's, that's my question. Did um, the last name, um uh, over the weekend, I know that I know this morning, Robert, uh, Robert. Special meeting, no question, uh, taxi. So from my, from my point of view, yeah, eh, what the they could, I don't know, he's official, so I need to make class, he can I know special meeting, huh, no. Oh. So my understanding, she go eh, Joe, but I Joe, but I know. I should ah, I know. I should I know. I had no, no, so I didn't actually need to. I bet I know, I should add, eh, but I'd have. I know there's a hundred and forty eight pages in need, in need in the legislation, yeah, I will about an hour ago. So it yeah, that's my uh my 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 thought. I don't know what you guys think. It yeah, what that? Love to you, Chair.
Thank you.
Robert.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, uh, thank you to uh Vice Chair and then Secretary and then the members of um our NOS um region. Um. I think um the way that the uh delegate is approaching this is that the um you got two things, I guess, or three things, that's mainly going on. The main thing is the fiscal year is ending on the thirtieth. Uh, though, I think um um I think um the council is put in a position to um let let me put it the way I want to put it, I guess, you guys can disagree with me, but he's using the um legislative branch personality, the salary Z to negotiate for what he wants. Because the the B N F and uh whoever worked on, I guess, most of the committees and then the public hearings that they had, I give because B N F though, controller though. Whoever helped out with um getting this budget all um completed to be considered for approval, although they approved it. It even now, just like he is that um, so what era, best or best uh sat in skate, then other shop it does or don't know. A lot of it, I think, is going through to his um his side of the office um for the um really, yes, it um the staff, Christian the staff, I think thirty three go east cup and nine star. And then I don't know, but raise it, that don't mean, so eh, you eh, you can actually out of um but it but it uh go go, but in uh, I think he's using this method to negotiate to get what he wants. That's the way I I read this. I don't know on it, um, the only, the only um the 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 only people there are getting really uh, but the ones that have salaries that they kept in place is um the delegates. But this is the the basic salary, they yeah. All of um the committee meetings, uh whatever travel or whatever is allocated for the delegates. Um, veto. So if if this, if nothing changes, starting with um the the first of October, eh the delegates are pretty much um just getting their salary and then um I guess for the most part, just attending meetings on without without the um the compensation that's usually approved for them. I don't know, the staff from the legislative side, you know, oh, you in our heart, nice. I think most of the um legislators, office of legislative service staff, you know. Um, the council delegates office staff is still, um, but I think the only the main essential one with the speaker, as they it that that Jack cotton is that call. So um and and this causes a major disruption in the way the government runs in the under rock. So I think they both need to, all three branches need to be in operation in order to be effective or efficient or the or to get the job done. So I don't that, I don't that in cases of Navajo Mount, I mean, um, Shanto and um we can eh, we've already had a regular meeting. Um, last week and week and two weeks ago. So I think um coming down towards the end, um, um, good, eh, I don't know if they they want to skip another meeting. But for the most part, uh, most of the chapters, they 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 need twenty five members to be present in order to conduct the meeting, so. I don't that um, I think uh also the public release documents that were released by the the president and by the speaker, I think um I guess shows or explains why, what what type of um rationale that they're using for him to make that decision to line item veto and then say, okay, I vetoed all your, 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 whatever I vetoed. And now let's sit down and negotiate and see how much money I can uh get back for the one I proposed. I guess, you know, she, that's what she's waiting to hear. And I think the council eh um, they're proceeding with um this action. Just like um Chanel, let delegate Daniel, when it uh I mean, a continuing resolution would have been, I think, a lot better to do than with that, eh, cause it's not the case. Um, I guess to to speak here and the council, the delegates who also, I guess, agreed to do it this way. So and then they say, I think, he that you care that that they want support from our region and um I think um for the most part, um, uh, the timing, the timing to get that um um, they they have very little time to work with to try to resolve this issue, but before the budget ends of the year. So that that would be my comment. Um, I'm trying to explain something, I guess, um, that um, from my perspective, so, Chair.
Thank you, Marshall.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that maybe we should add a line in there that defunding the legislative branch also um undermines the the voters' vote. Um, it it also reduces the oversight and I guess um decreases the support services for those that are offered to the constituents, to voters themselves. I would say voter disenfranchisement um to a large degree and I think that that's important. Um, to a large degree, and I think that, that's important for the president to read. I don't know if the Navajo Nation has any laws in place to kind of protect the. The funds of the legislative branch, I mean, other than just a salary position, but the additional money that they usually bring in. And it will be very, I think it will also adversely affect the delegates that have more than one chapter to oversee. I don't think the larger chapters that only have one delegate would really have a problem with um. Operating with twenty five thousand, but the larger chap or the ones with the larger amounts of uh chapters would definitely have reduced, um. I guess, reduce ability to bring information to those chapters that they're representing, and also their LDA is not being involved. I think that should be added, that's just, I have a way we want to word that.
Martha, if you read the resolution, um, number two.
I did read it, I, I didn't really see what I was looking at, just that reduced representation, but I think it should. Point out like what type of representation it is.
Oh, well, I was gonna say, in nine, in number two, where it's basically says the North Regional Council hereby rec- um. Directs the now president, the vice president to sign into law the many resolution. And to respect the authority of the Navajo people by not misusing the line item veto authority. So, I, I think that kind of provides in general. Of what you're asking to be added on to the resolution.
From all four NOS chapters, um, this thing, um, what the president did, it kind of, it's a. Eh, eh, he's, he did the same thing what Joe Shirley did back in twenty ten. Uh, President Joe Shirley did the very same thing, right after this um veto line. Eh, after that, that was um enacted, so um, I don't know, the council. They're, they're probably aware of it, um. I, I think we're just going through the same, the same cycle again, and, and I don't know. If you look at the previous two thousand ten when that happened, I, I'm pretty sure the next item's gonna be. A duplicate of what happened back then, but I think we're, we're kind of doing the cycle thing again. I know it's not relevant to this uh resolution, but this is something to think about, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Here.
Marshall.
It is relevant to the situation. Because it, it also had to do with the contingency uh budget as well, same thing that. Um, Nigron did. Only there was a smaller amount of, amount of money involved, it's like six million, somewhere under six million dollars. So, I'm not sure how that particular portion went, I'm just, I think there should be. To me, the resolution doesn't have enough of a, it's a recommendation, a light recommendation is the way that I look at it. Um, if we're serious about this, we should reword some of this stuff. Some of the wording on the resolution itself, but in the interest of time, I think. We've talked about it enough, and I think we should vote on it, call for the question again. I, I know that we're pressed against a, a time, time crunch because of the. The period or the amount of time that we have.
Okay. Call for the question, three, two, one, okay. Honorable Herman Daniels.
I will agree.
Thank you very much, Willis or Willie Gray Eyes.
Favor.
Thank you. Alex Bessington.
In favor.
Thank you, Willis beginning.
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you, Twilight Madison.
Favor.
Thank you. Marshall Gray Eyes.
In favor.
Thank you, Robert Black Junior.
Green in favor.
Okay, thank you, Arlene Laughter.
Sorry, in favor, this is Arlene, in favor.
Thank you, thank you, Roland Small Canyon.
A little green chair.
Thank you very much, myself, I abstain, and then Persa.
In favor.
Thank you very much, with that, we have two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine in favor, zero opposed, and two abstain, motion passes. Okay, thank you guys very much, we'll go ahead and call for the adjournment, one emotion.
Motion.
So he's motioning.
Marshall, we are seconds. Robert Black motions, Rob- uh, Robert Black motions, and then second by Marshall Kane. All for the vote, honorable Herman Daniels.
The vote green.
Thank you, Willie Gray Eyes.
Favor.
Thank you, Alex Bessington.
In favor.
Thank you, Willis beginning.
In favor.
Thank you, Twilight Madison.
In favor.
Thank you, Marshall Gray Eyes.
In favor.
Thank you, Robert Black.
And the affirmative.
Thank you, Arlene.
In favor.
Thank you, Roland Small Canyon.
In favor.
Thank you, myself, I abstain, and Persa Benali.
In favor.
Thank you very much, with that, we have a total of ten in favors, zero opposed, one abstain. Time is now six forty three PM, I do greatly appreciate you guys all for joining, and you guys all have a wonderful day, thank you.
Bye.
Hey, have a good night.